Could you go in the back? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order for tonight. First item up on our agenda is to approve our agenda as presented. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to the Otto Brown Scholarship recipient.
So it's exciting that we get to award Kelly Adkins the annual Otto Brown Scholarship. She's gonna be our recipient this year. For those new teachers and new staff members that are in the audience, Kathy Brown and her family many years ago established a trust that would benefit Clinton City Schools teachers. And so this scholarship is given out annually to any Clinton City staff member that wants to go to the University of Tennessee and further their education in any way, whether it be like a literacy degree, administrative degree, anything. And so Kelly has been working and she got her literacy. Have you received it yet or are you still working on it?
In my last class.
Last class of her literacy endorsement. And so she has learned a lot and has been really instrumental in helping us with some professional development and helping teach other teachers about foundational literacy skills. And then Kelly, if you don't care real quickly to tell them what you're gonna use this one for.
To use this one to move forward and get my EBS in literacy.
So if you recall, Kelly was, she was a 5th grade teacher at Clinton Elementary School and then we moved her into a certified intervention position. And then when Abby went to North Clinton, part of the deal was, is Abby said she would go to North Clinton if she got to take Kelly Adkins with her. And so Kelly Adkins graciously agreed to that. And so she is now our certified intervention teacher at North Clinton Elementary. So she will take this scholarship and she will do great things and our children at Clinton City Schools will definitely benefit on behalf of that. So Kelly, I'd like to get a picture with, Kathy could not be with us tonight, but she sends her congratulations and is very, very tickled that you're taking advantage of this scholarship. So Dr. Bible, if we can go down and meet her at the bottom of the ramp. And then Jamie, if you can. Abby, why don't you get up and stand with her since you are the principal at North Clinton.
Well, I can't be as honest with that. It's going to be true. And I think it was worth it.
Kelly, yes.
No, it is not Kelly White, not your Kelly White.
Feature stories. What they need to ask. I hope you can handle it. So she has, she has enough. She should.
Yeah.
It's pretty, I guess it's unusual for a system to have somebody that can do that every single year. So maybe. I know.
All right, moving on, we have some new staff members from Clinton Elementary School.
We do, Ms. Sharp, if you want to come up. And I'm gonna let you introduce and tell a little bit about your several new staff members that we've got at Clinton Elementary School this year.
Well, I would love to say that this is one of my favorite recruits we hired this year. So I'll start with Skylar Willard. And Skylar is a 1st grade teacher. So Skylar, if you wanna come up and stand. And if you'll just remain standing. Skylar is a 1st year teacher, but her knowledge exceeds any 1st year teacher that we've seen. These teachers are coming to us so much more prepared. And her contribution in PLCs and the way she reaches out to coaches, we're just so very proud of Skylar. So welcome Skylar. And then we have Zoe Zodi. And Zoe is a 5th grade ELA and Social Studies teacher. And Zoe is a 1st year teacher, but she interned with us last year with Ashley Brock. So we're excited to have Zoe. She already knew the Clinton Elementary School way and we grabbed her up as soon as we could, so. And then we have Savannah Akers. And Savannah is a 5th grade math and science teacher. And while she's a new teacher at Clinton Elementary School, she did teach at Claxton for 3 years prior to us stealing her away. So she's done a really good job and we're super proud of her. And behavior management is her thing. So she is all things.
She also did her internship with us at North Clinton, correct?
She did.
Savannah, yes. And you are a Clinton City alumni?
Yes.
And Zoe is a Clinton City alumni, correct?
I was English in Texas.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
We are.
I guess when you were with us last year, you just felt like you were part of it.
But I was actually assistant principal when Savannah was at Clinton Elementary and Jamie was principal. So it's neat to see it come full circle, but we're super proud of Savannah. And then we have Ms. Teresa McCoy. And Teresa, it is her 1st year with us. She is working with Wendy Edwards and CDC. But we actually knew Teresa when she came in for the interview. We just embraced, she worked at We Ministry. And so she was a familiar face at Clinton Elementary. And she and Wendy worked very well together and the kids already love her so much. So welcome. And then we have Ms. Kaitlin Kennedy. So Kaitlin has a daughter, Penelope. I don't know if you wanna wave, Penelope, or if you're gonna be shy. But she is an instructional assistant and she is one of the hardest workers that I know. We are so glad to have her. She was actually a stay-at-home mom for awhile and wanted the opportunity to be with her daughter and see her grow and just be a part of her education. So, but welcome, Kaitlin. So proud of you.
Very good. So at this time, if you can kinda turn this way, I'll introduce you to our school board. And then they want an opportunity to welcome you to Clinton City Schools. And then if Jenna and Lauren, if you all can stand at the ramp area with them and Jamie will take a picture of you all so that we can officially welcome them. So guys, we used to do this in August and we would invite everybody to come. And at that point, we knew that your eyes were glassed over, that you were exhausted and that you were just like, you know, flying by the seat of your pants because that's just what we do in August. So we kinda gave you a chance to get your feet underwater and get the school year started before we brought you. But if you've been in other school districts, you are definitely gonna find that Clinton City Schools is a very special, hopefully you've already discovered that, a very unique place. But these 6 board members represent not a specific school, but they represent Clinton City Schools. And you will find that this group of professionals sincerely makes decisions in the best interest of kids, in the best interest of families, the best interest of teachers. And so one of the parts of being beautiful things about being small is that we can just make a quick decision and we can run with it. And never, ever is there a time that I contact any of these 6 people that if they know it's gonna benefit a kid or a teacher, that the answer is not yes. So you are in good hands. But they meet once a month and they are responsible for policies and procedures and approvals of purchases. And they do a lot of the behind-the-scenes work that makes the magic happen in Clinton City Schools. So down here at the end, this is Debbie Heaton. And Debbie joined us about, yeah, almost a year, almost a year ago on the school board. She lives in Clinton and is a strong advocate for children. And she used to be a Head Start teacher. So she understands the young children and just has a true passion for children and education. Then we have Joey Smith, who is our vice chair of the school board. Joey has kids that go, oh, just one kid now that goes to Clinton Elementary. The other one's at Clinton Middle School. But he's a local realtor. He is historic downtown Clinton. He is basically Mr. Clinton. And anything historical that you ever want to know about Clinton, he is going to have an answer for you. Then we have Merle Price. And Merle Price actually completed her career at Clinton City Schools as a kindergarten teacher. And then she also was principal at North Clinton Elementary for just a few years. A few years. She has fabulous stories to tell. If you ever want to just feel like that she understands the crazy world that you are in, she does, and she'll have a story to back it up. But she brings a great perspective of what it's like to be boots on the ground inside Clinton City Schools. And then we have Dr. Tim Bible. And so he is our board chair and has been board chair for probably about 20, 20 something years? A few years?
I guess, I don't know.
But he has a local dentist office right across the street. You may know his better half, Vicky Bible, at Clinton Elementary School. So he has been a longstanding supporter of Clinton City Schools. Then we have Lori Wilson. Lori Wilson's children went through Clinton City Schools. She is one of Clinton City Schools' biggest fans. She is, if you ever, if you don't follow Clinton Strong on social media, you should. But her and Joey are the ones who created Clinton Strong just to get out publicly the wonderful things that happen in our communities and our schools. And, and so she is a local.
Lender.
Lender. I was gonna say loan officer and that didn't sound like that was gonna come out right. But she's a local lender. So when you all are buying your next house, you wanna look up Lori. And then at the end, we have Curtis Isabel. And he is a local attorney that also works kind of right across the street. His children also went through Clinton City Schools. And he is a strong advocate for Clinton City Schools. And how long have you been on the board? 10, 12? 12 years, I think? But, but anyway, he is, he's just a great, he's a load of fun and he is the best storyteller also, if you ever get a chance to hear his stories. But you will see them in and out of the building, but they are only, they truly are just here to support us. So at this time, they want to welcome you. So if you'll come up and let them welcome you to Clinton, you can just start over here with Debbie and we'll work our way around and then we'll get your picture. So just come on up. And we'll just, we'll stay behind here, but you can start and we'll just welcome you to Clinton City.
Nice to see you again.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome. Congratulations. Welcome to us. Welcome to us.
Awesome, how are you?
Welcome, congratulations.
Long time. Good to have you here.
I've done your nick, but I'll shake your hand too.
I know you are, I know you are. You're so full of joy. Can we like get in the back maybe? Would y'all hate me if I made you do that? We'll just get, we'll try to get the windows. Can we find a window? We're hitting you the window. Okay, we'll get a window. Kelly, you're barely in the window. That's okay. Lauren and I are gonna share a window. You're gonna share a window, okay. All right, I'm gonna count it through. Okay, 1, 2, 3. And one more, 1, 2, 3. Very good. And guys, as exciting as our board meeting is, Lauren, you all have to stay. You all are really pleased with us, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
What's that?
It's a lot of rain, huh?
That's just what's going.
I know. Is one of those replacements might quit the last month?
No.
All righty. All right, moving on on our agenda. Do we have anything, Kelly, for the agenda input tonight?
No, no one signed up today.
All right, no agenda input. Moving on, we'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to our financial report with Ms. Kelly.
So Scott Ray could not be with us tonight. So you get the Kelly version of the financial report, which is a lot simpler than what Scott Ray is gonna say. But really, there's really not a whole lot to share. This is the financial report for July. So that would be our 1st month in the fiscal year. The major expenses that you will see on there is for facilities because we were paying for the carpet in the auditorium and also for the new flooring in central office. You'll also see a fairly large expense there for textbooks. Just because July, we, the science textbooks that rolled over into this year, we weren't able to get all of it in before the July 30th deadline. So, but basically most of the expenses are just getting ready for the school year, for up and running. So Scott said no, no glaring. It's just kind of a boring financial report that we are where we need to be and all is well.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Johnson regarding our financial report for the month of July? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve our financial report as presented.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Curtis, yes.
Yes.
Lori Wilson?
Yes.
Tim Bible?
Yes.
Merle Price?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Debbie Heaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to new business. Once again, it's time to elect our delegates or assign our delegates. Does anybody have an interest in being a delegate at the Delegate Assembly in Nashville this year?
And don't everybody speak at once.
I'd do it, but I have grandchildren there and I wanna see them.
Yes.
I'll do it.
All right.
I actually really enjoy doing it. I didn't wanna jump in front of anybody else, though.
No problem.
Lori?
I'll do it too. We did it last time.
We did?
Yeah. Okay, sure.
We did an alternate.
Two years ago, maybe.
All right.
Was it two years ago? We did it.
All right.
We did alternate. Okay, yeah.
All righty. I'll entertain a motion for Joey and Lori to be our delegates and for Merle to be our alternate.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to our school board policies. We've got 1 revised policy and 1 new policy.
We do. So the separation practices for 10-year teachers, that's not something that we fortunately have to visit very often. However, this was a TSBA-recommended policy. There was just one minor tweak in there that just basically states that if we suspend a teacher without pay, that they have a right to have all copies of all of the data and documentation that we use to make that decision. So it was just a little minor tweak of something that we needed to add based on a court case that was occurring somewhere else in Tennessee. The Title VI and racial offenses is a new policy. We've worked with Caitlin Burchett and Chris McCarty on this process. While we have always followed up with consequences for any inappropriate behavior that would fall under this category, this just basically streamlines the response of how we would act across all 3 districts or all 3 schools to ensure consistency. And this policy will also come with a code in Aspen to where we could track just to ensure that there is not multiple offenses and that we can just make sure that we are on the right track. So that is a new policy just to streamline the way that we handle things at all 3 schools. So those are coming to you for approval tonight.
All right. Any questions or comments regarding the 2 policies that we have before us? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve on 1st and 2nd reading the school board policies as presented. Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to items for information. We do have our October meeting, which will be here October the 16th. The TSBA conference in Nashville will be coming up as well. Kim, have you heard from everybody or, okay. Just make sure those are on your calendars. We also have a maternity leave to note there as well. And with that, we will move into our director's report.
Okay, and so before I give my report, I'm gonna invite Ms. Sharp to come back up. And she is, we're moving to highlight a school each month. So Ms. Sharp is doing Clinton Elementary this month. North Clinton will be next month and then South Clinton will follow up in November. And so she is going to give kind of an annual report of test scores and just tell you a little bit about what's happening at Clinton Elementary.
Okay, so we were super proud of our T cap scores for 2025. On the report that I gave you, you'll see it listed by ELA, math, science, and social studies. And I just wanna highlight a few things. Our overall proficiency in ELA in all grades was 59.3. And we are so excited about that. I can remember years ago when the proficiency was at like 44, 45% and we were proud of that. And this is just a testament to how hard our teachers and students have worked to grow that to 59.3. For math, sort of the same. The overall proficiency was 56.8. So I would like to take a moment to brag on Lauren King. I know that she's here. But for 6th grade math, we had a very high grip in math last year. But you can see the proficiency was 70.7. And I think that she was number 8 in the state.
She was 5.
5 in the state.
She was 5 in the state.
We are super proud of our math scores this year. Science proficiency on T cap was 56.3. And again, you can see 6th grade was a strong area there. But I was looking at our science scores from a few years ago as well and it has grown tremendously from what it used to be. So social studies proficiency on T cap, we just have 6th grade that tests in social studies. So that's why you see it's the only grade there. And the overall proficiency for 6th grade social studies is 81.3. And that is Morgan Lane. She is a beast. But they worked very, very hard and we're so very proud of our T cap scores. So with those wonderful scores, if you look at our T VOS, our growth, student growth from 1 year to the next on T cap. So the previous scores were their achievement and this is how they grew. You can see that our overall school level was a 5. And in literacy, we got 5, a 5. In numeracy, we got a 5. And then when you combine the both, we got a 5. In science, we got a 5. And in social studies, we got a 5. And I did wanna read each of those scores because we are very, very proud. And a 5 is the highest score that you can get, so.
So what was our composite again, Jenna?
It was a 5.
Okay.
In case you all didn't hear, we're 5s. We've been celebrating things in 5s in Clinton Elementary School. We had a big celebration with our teachers and we gave them prizes in increments of 5. So that was fun. They loved it. Our school-wide success rate, so what a success rate is, is they take all the proficiency scores and put them together to give you a school-wide goal. Our goal last year was 57.3. And you can see as an overall school, we got a 57.7. So we exceeded our goal. And it usually goes up by about 2 points each year, which is the goal that we ask for them to increase on our school improvement plan. So, and then our chronic absenteeism, which is calculated by the number of students, or the number of days that a student misses versus the days in the school year. And they come up with a number and that was 11.5. Hillary Keith is our social worker and she has been a huge part of getting that rate to come down. I think it was at 14 a few years ago. So 11.5 may look like a lot, but when it's came down from 14 and we hope to reduce it even more this year. I wanted to include our I-ready growth and achievement from May simply because the data that you've just seen is grades 3 through 6. But I feel like I needed to highlight K through 2 as well. So this data includes K through 2. So in reading, 72% of our students K through 6 were on or above grade level. And then we had 147% growth. So the growth, we asked them to grow 100% and that is 1 year. So almost all the students included altogether grew about a year and a half and we're very proud of that. For math, we had 70% on or above grade level and 124% growth. I feel like our PLCs in the previous years have contributed to this growth. And this year, we feel like our PLCs are even stronger. We're focusing on the team rubric and we have different pillars that the teachers are committing to focus on to grow students, help grow students, while analyzing their work in PLCs and strengthening teacher content knowledge. So we hope this goes up even more. Does anybody have any questions?
There's just so much to celebrate. A couple of things that I'll just point out that jump out is, you know, the state has put so much emphasis on 3rd grade reading proficiency. And while there is research that shows that students need to be reading on grade level by 3rd grade, you also have to keep in mind that's the very first time they ever take a standardized test. They don't have the stamina for the bubble filling in. And a lot of that is more my ability to take a test versus my actual ability to read and comprehend and understand. So I, what I, what I look at is where we are and how we continue to grow. So when you look at every subject, you know, you look at 3rd grade, we start at 44%, but then we have a 67% in ELA by the time we get them to 6th grade. So we always talk about our powerhouse 6th grade, our powerhouse 6th grade. And we do have a powerhouse 6th grade. But Lauren King could not do what Lauren King could do if we did not have a strong K through 5 that built that foundation that she could then take and build on. And so I just think as you look down the scores there and you see how we're building the proficiency as they, as they grow through the grades, that goes to show that when we look at, we were growing them a year and a half, that growth, you're cutting into that achievement gap and you're seeing that happen over the grades. And so that is just something, something to highlight. And we always say that if we can get a Clinton City kid and they stay with us, we're gonna get them to proficiency if they stay with us long enough. The other thing about chronic absenteeism that I wanted you all to know, just to put it into perspective, you know, Jenna has 2 CDC classes. And she has, I think we're up to 7 children in wheelchairs. And so when you look at this chronic absenteeism, they do not take into consideration if they, if it's unexcused absence or excused absence. So our medically fragile children who can't come to school because of a disability or a medical condition, those students count against us. So in the state data, they don't care whether it's excused or unexcused. And we have fought that. And actually, I will say that the commissioner actually agrees with that and is like, this is a silly, a silly indicator. And they made an attempt to change that within the state legislation this year. But unfortunately, the feds kicked it back and denied the, denied it for federal accountability. And so chronic absenteeism stays. So that means that they miss 17 days. So we go to school 177 days. And if a child misses 17 days, excused, unexcused, for whatever reason, then they're counted into that percentage. And so while we look at it and while we work on it, you know, I think we have to respect that if a child is sick, the parents don't, we don't, we shouldn't force parents. I mean, they need to stay at home if they're sick. And if they're medically fragile, we want them to take care of their health first. And so there's a little bit while we watch it, there's a little bit that you're never gonna get that down to a low, low, a low, low number. So just kinda put that into context. And where that will hit us is, and Jamie, help me out here, but chronic absenteeism will hit us in federal accountability when it comes to like reward schools and.
It's worth 10%.
It's worth 10%.
But it is not involved in state accountability.
Yeah. But this will not play into our letter grades. That does not play into letter grades, so. Jenna, thank you. Lots of good things are happening at Clinton Elementary School.
Thank you, Jenna.
Okay, and then I have a couple of Clinton City updates for you. And it's, Kim got it on, so you can either click the link or I'll pass down a hard copy. But honestly, we are just, the big news is, is that we are settled and we're doing business. I mean, we are, we've got, response to intervention groups are going up. So they're up and running. So every student in Clinton City Schools for 45 minutes every single day is receiving either intervention or enrichment on their level, closing gaps of areas of need. Teachers are focused, the schedules are running. And so we're just, we're just doing the hard work. We are gonna hold our annual school board retreat at North Clinton Elementary School. Abby, so welcome. We're coming to, we're coming your way on September the 26th. And we anticipate that will be from 8:30 until 2 o'clock. Our main objective of our retreat this year is going to be looking at the facilities at North Clinton Elementary School and some current needs that are popping up with space and facilities. And then we are also gonna be creating our 5-year annual strategic plan, which will be named Accelerate 2030. And so when I first became director, our strategic plan, do you remember, Jamie? Was Vision 2020. And we thought 2020 was so far off. And now we're doing Accelerate 2030, so time has flown. Midterms are gonna go home tomorrow. The never-ending Clinton Elementary Playground update is that Miracle is supposed to be there on Monday with a crew. They were supposed to be there 2 weeks ago and did not show up. And she said that a project prior to us was taking longer than expected. But the new estimated date, she told us that she will have a team there on Monday. So we are hopeful that that will happen and that's gonna be the magic day that we start getting that equipment up. All 3 schools successfully last week held a family and friends, grandparents day. We called it different things, but it was just a great day at all three schools. We served hundreds, hundreds of families and loved ones that came to have lunch with us. S.F.E. did a great job. We had Alfredo or barbecue were the two choices. And guys, Jamie and I worked North Clinton, and they had 130, 130 individuals come to North Clinton. And so it just was so much fun watching everybody interact and spend quality time together in the school building. We are currently selling our annual Blaze banners for the season. If you know anyone that would like to renew or purchase a banner, send them my way. I did not attach the form, but I have everything that they need. We have space for probably about 2025 banners, and so we've already gotten some of those renewals. But if you have any business friends that would like to support the Blaze, send them my way. Cross Country is currently completing their competition season. We have 20 kids, fourth through sixth grade, that are running with us this year, and they're off to a great start. And then I feel like this is a broken record, but congratulations to Jason Glasshouser once again. This is his third and final time winning the CMA Music Teachers of Excellence Award. And so that is 30 teachers across the nation that are chosen to receive this very prestigious award. And this is, I mean, it's an honor to win it one time, and he's won it three times. And so I got a text message from him, and he said, Kelly... He said, I've broken their rules. And he said, they have come out with new regulations as of this year that you can only be a winner three times in a lifetime. So we enjoyed celebrating him for the final time at a CMA dinner in Nashville last night. But that is just... They put on... Leanne was able to attend, and they put on just a quality show that truly honors music educators and the arts in schools. And so it was a neat experience. And then the last day of the nine weeks is gonna be October 3rd. Hard to believe we're talking about fall break, but fall break is coming up. And then we'll end fall break with another in-service day on Monday, October 13th. But things are going smoothly. Things are going well. Any questions for me?
All right. Thank you, Kelly. All right. Great things continue to happen at Clinton City Schools. And with that, I'll declare this meeting adjourned.